Good evening and welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council Meeting for Thursday, March 3rd, 2022. I'll ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have a group of American Heritage Girls here to lead us in the pledge. So please come up front and lead us in the pledge. Ready? Go ahead. "Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. Please be seated. I'll ask the girls to stay up here. I'm going to be coming down front. So this is American, this is Women's History Month, and we have a proclamation this evening, and we have two women from the Civil Rights Commission. I'll ask them to come up, come up for this, yep, to make the, for the presentation. All right, Jennifer and Angelica. And I would like all the women on our staff and in the room to come up and stand with us for this proclamation. Chief, come on up. Come up. Any other women in the room who would like to join us, please come on up? Okay, are you ready? All right. Whereas in 1977, the United Nations General Assembly adopted a resolution calling on member states to proclaim a day for women's, women's rights and international peace. And following the United Nations' lead each year, the US President issues a proclamation calling on all people to observe March as National Women's History Month. And women of every background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation, our state, and our city in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas women lead and play critical economic, political, cultural, and social roles in our nation, state, and city, and have been at the forefront of major progressive social change movements. And whereas Women's History Month is observed around the world and provides opportunities to recognize the progress in advancing women's equality, celebrate the achievements of women and girls, and raise awareness of the social, economic, and political barriers still facing women and girls today. And whereas all societies should work together to secure the rights and full potential of all people in order to achieve lasting solutions to social, economic, and political problems. Now therefore, I Nicholas Abu Asli, Mayor of the City of Marion, do hereby proclaim the month of March as Women's History Month in the City of Marion, and encourage all residents to observe this month, celebrate the achievements of women and girls, and support efforts that promote advancement toward equality for all people." Do you have to come forward and accept it?
Sure.
Oh goodness.
There we go.
Thanks for getting it.
Okay, well, Colette and Sarah, why aren't you down here? Come on down for the picture. Come down. Come join us for the picture.
Sure.
All right. And I just want to say to all the women in the room, thank you for all your contributions, and all the girls, you could be mayor someday. You could be whoever you want to be, and this is, you're representing all the girls in Marion, and we want you to know that you have every opportunity to contribute to your full potential and to be who you want to be. So would you like to say something?
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Mayor Abu Asli. So again, my name is Angelica Venetta. I stand here as the first female chair of the Marion Civil Rights Commission since its inception about seven or eight years ago. And actually, Jennifer Tibbetts and I stand before you together as the first female chair and vice chair in these roles, and that is a very impactful and important role to serve within the community. But we stand on the shoulders of other strong leaders and women who have come before us and made history. Of course, that also includes Marion's own Deb Crable, the first fire chief in the City of Marion, and the second fire chief in the state. I feel like that deserves a round of applause. And that's also on the shoulders of the first female in the role of Vice President of our country, Kamala Harris, and many other first females who have made powerful impacts in the community, whose tireless leadership has paved the way for myself and many other women in leadership positions. Now, does being a female make me more or less qualified for this position? Absolutely not. Does representation matter? Absolutely. Period. So in 20 years, I do look forward to many of the little girls who look like myself, who represent Jennifer and I and any of the other women in the room, to be in these leadership positions, and I will celebrate them and honor them, and I will be clapping my hands at the table with them.
And I would just like to say a few words about just remembering the, the meaning behind Women's History Month. And so thank you for honoring that, because there were so many women that have come before us and champions and allies. And, and there's still a lot of work to do. There's still a lot of issues surrounding gender equity. And so the fact that the City of Marion takes such a active role in working to create an inclusive and belonging community is so important. So I want to thank you for, everybody for all the work that you do in Marion, and, because the fight's not over. We still, we still need to raise our voices and know that it takes all women to help bring the world to a better place.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Are you good or no?
We'll do one with the celery.
Okay. Yeah, sure.
Actually, I guess we kind of did.
Yeah, we did.
Don't forget. She's hiding.
We want chief in here.
Of course.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
What are we doing?
There we go, all right.
There we go.
Perfect. No, you're good.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay.
There you go, chief.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, chief, you should have stayed up here. We have some recognitions tonight here. We have swearing in ceremonies.
You're just gonna stay down here? Thank you, Mayor. Tonight is a good night. It's a great night. Tonight, two firefighters that have felt that they have been forgotten are getting what they are due. COVID has haunted us for over two years, and many of the pomp and circumstance that we normally provide our coworkers was put on hold. But tonight, we are going to honor two firefighters that began their career with the Marion Fire Department in June of 2019 as probationary firefighters. It has been a tradition that when a firefighter completes their first year of probation and have proven themselves to be worthy of the position of career firefighter, they are sworn in by the mayor of the city. Two of our firefighters completed their probation and were promoted to career firefighters in June of 2020 during the Alpha and Beta COVID strains of the pandemic. Tonight, we finally have them here in person with their families to be ceremoniously sworn in as Marion firefighters. Firefighter EMT Ryan Fithner, would you please come forward? Firefighter Fithner began with the Marion Fire Department in February of 2011 as a volunteer paid-on-call firefighter. He served as a volunteer for our department for eight years, showing his dedication and love for the job. During those eight years, Ryan obtained his Emergency Medical Technician Certification, his Firefighter I and II State Certifications, and an Associate Degree from Kirkwood Community College. Ryan is a graduate of the Lynnmar High School and did obtain his Associate Degree in 2016. He worked with the security at Mercy Medical Center for 13 years prior to Marion Fire, and his perseverance as a volunteer and his commitment in striving to be better, as put, as he put it in the interview, confirms his love for the fire service and giving back to the community. Thank you, Ryan. Firefighter Paramedic Evan Berry, please come forward. Fighter-Fighter Berry applied in March of 2018 and finally was called up for duty in June of 2019. Evan attended high school in Griffin, Georgia, where his father was a firefighter. Evan's mother was a paramedic, and Evan had stated in his interview that that made him hesitant to get into the emergency medical services. Evan ended up serving in the US Marine Corps from 2010 to 2014, and during that time, he attended college-level fire courses and ended up coming to Iowa. After moving to Iowa, he volunteered with the Springville Fire Department and worked full-time for the Anamosa Ambulance Service. During his interview, he told us, being hesitant being in the emergency medicine, but stated, "I really found joy in helping people." Thank you, firefighter Berry. And now their wives will come up to give them the pinning of their new badges. Lauren and Ashley. This one goes to you. I put them in the right pocket. No, 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 stay up here. You gotta get your picture taken. Okay. Family, you want to come up and get closer for pictures? Feel free. This is once in a lifetime. Come on up. We are proud to have these two on our department. Thank you very much. Oh, sorry, sorry. I goofed. Come back up here. I goofed. Where'd he go?
He's right there.
Oh, there he is! Mayor, I didn't see you sitting there. I would have been reminded. You actually have to take an oath to be career firefighters. I'm getting forgetful in my old age.
As a firefighter of Marion, Iowa.
As a firefighter of Marion, Iowa.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the ordinances of the City of Marion, Iowa.
And the ordinances of the City of Marion, Iowa.
And that I will serve the City of Marion and its fire department.
And that I will serve the City of Marion and its fire department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
With honor and respect.
With honor and respect.
And in adherence to the ethics of the fire service.
And in the adherence to the ethics of the fire service.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
As a firefighter of Marion, Iowa.
As a firefighter of Marion, Iowa.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the ordinances of the City of Marion, Iowa.
And the ordinances of the City of Marion, Iowa.
And that I will serve the City of Marion and its fire department.
And I will serve the City of Marion and its fire department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
With honor and respect.
With honor and respect.
And in adherence to the ethics of the fire service.
And in adherence to the ethics of the fire service. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, we have one more presentation, and then we'll do the roll call after we're done with the presentations. Sorry, I skipped that. Okay.
Good afternoon, evening. Last fall, Marion was chosen as the finalist for the 2021 Voice of the People Award for Excellence in Equity Inclusion Engagement. The award was presented by Polco and the National Research Center in partnership with the International City and County Management Association, also known as ICMA. It was announced during the ICMA Annual Conference last fall. Only jurisdictions that demonstrated strong use of online resident engagement and illustrated actions to benefit their communities were selected as winners or finalists. Marion's nomination recognized the work of the Community Equity Task Force and the use of the Equity and Inclusion Survey to collect baseline data related to safety, fairness, and how welcome people feel in Marion. We recently received the plaque and want to officially present it to City Council. And staff that were involved in the effort, so.
I know. Out of tension.
Okay, I think we have the presentations all finished. Now we have the roll call.
Mr. Harper.
Here.
Mr. Jensen.
Here.
Ms. Atkins.
Here.
Mayor Abu Asli.
Here.
Mr. Brandt.
Here.
Ms. Mensah.
Here.
Mr. Sterned.
Okay, thank you. At this time, there is a public forum, which is a time set aside on the agenda for any comments from the public on items that are on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. If anyone's here to address the council in connection with an item that's part of a public hearing, there will be time to speak at that time. But if there's anything that is on the agenda but not part of a public hearing, and there's someone here to address that, please come forward at this time. Okay, we'll close that portion of the meeting and move on to the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through F3, Resolutions Numbers 30321 through 30339.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through F3, Resolutions 30321 through 30339. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro temp for the next section.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve items, items E1 through E3. This will include Resolution Numbers 30340 through 30342. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Asli's abstention as follows. Items E1 through E3, Resolutions 30340 through 30342. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. And we have one abstention. Now move the, the meeting back to the mayor.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 30343, approving 28E agreement with Cedar Valley Humane Society for Animal Control Services and authorizing payments in the amount of $4,333 per month.
Second.
It's been moved by council member Atkins, seconded by council member Jensen, to approve Resolution Number 30343, approving the 28E agreement with Cedar Valley Humane Society for Animal Control Services and authorizing the payments in the amount of $4,333 per month. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. Congratulations, chief.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 30344, approving the extension of the contract with BNR Logging regarding the Fox Heritage Woods Salvage Timber Sale through March 31st, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 30344, approving the extension of the contract with BNR Logging for the Fox Heritage Woods Salvage Timber Sale through March 31st. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 30345, approving partial payment number one with Boomerang Corporation regarding the South 31st Street and Highway 100 traffic signals and turn lane improvements project in the amount of $45,340.65.
Taken.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 30345, approving partial payment number one with Boomerang Corporation for the South 31st Street and Highway 100 traffic signals and turn lane improvements project in the amount of $45,340.65. Discussion. All those in favor of Resolution 30345, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. Next on the agenda is a public hearing for the 2022 Hot Mix Asphalt Resurfacing Project. The public hearing is now open. Do we have a short presentation, synopsis of the project?
Yes. This is our annual Hot Mix Asphalt Resurfacing Project. The streets listed are up there on the screen. On the, we received one bid from LL Pelling for this project at $1,025,438.25. Again, this project was budgeted for $1 million even, so we are slightly over that budgeted amount. But I work with staff on a daily basis to ensure this project gets under budget, and everything's kind of dependent on when we get the asphalt surface removed, and we make decisions based off that. So there are contingencies built into this project, but on a yearly basis, we tend to come under contract amount.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any members of the public here to address counsel on this project, either in favor or in opposition? Please come forward. Okay. Have we received any comments outside the meeting?
None have been received.
Okay, thank you. Please note that for the record, and we'll close the public hearing. And for the resolution, accepting the bid, I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro temp.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 30346, accepting bids and awarding contract to LL Pelling Incorporated regarding the 2022 HMA resurfacing project in the amount
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 30346, accepting bids and awarding contract to LL Pelling Company Incorporated regarding the 2022 HMA resurfacing project in the amount of $1,025,438.25. Discussion. Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. And we have one abstention. Motion passes.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing regarding the Indian Creek Trail Project. Public hearing is now open. We have a presentation?
Yes. We received bids last week. Actually, this was through the DOT for the Indian Creek Trail Project. This is a trail that has funding through the MPO that is a trail from basically Donnelly Park up to Tower Terrace Road, just a little bit east of Lynnmar High School. We received five bids with the low bed being Peterson Contractors at $1,719,592.32. This has a late start date of March 21st, so it's coming up pretty quickly here. 140 working days and liquidated damages of $1,000 per day. The late start date is this quick just due to having to remove some trees prior to the April 1st deadline through EPA regulations.
Okay. Are there any members of the public here to address counsel on this topic, either in favor or in opposition? Please come forward. Okay. Have we received any comments outside the meeting?
No comments were received.
Thank you. Please note that for the record. We'll close the public hearing, and for the resolution, I will turn it over to the mayor pro temp.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve Resolution Number 30347, accepting bids and awarding contract to Peterson Contractors, Inc., regarding the Indian Creek Trail Project in the amount of $1,719,592.32.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 30347, accepting bids and awarding contract to Peterson Contractors Incorporated regarding the Indian Creek Trail Project in the amount of $1,719,592.32. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Yeah, can you just remind us what the width of this trail is, and then the material that'll be used?
It'll be 10-foot concrete trail.
10-foot concrete. I thought that. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just a follow-up on that. Is any portion of this trail down in, effectively in floodplain?
Yes. This, this does fall Indian Creek, and everything's been permitted through Iowa DNR floodplain and the City of Marion's floodplain management.
This, this optimizes the use of what is normally dry, dry turf as opposed to in the spring when it has a potential flood. So this is good. Okay.
Have the discussion? And we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. And motion carries with one abstention.
And now we have a public hearing regarding the preliminary site development plan for property located at 3110th Avenue, Marion, Iowa, Green Park Apartment Living LLC. You have a presentation on this?
Yes. So the councils received the packet, and tonight's public hearing is on their revised preliminary site development plan for the property identified by Councilman Brandt. The site was approved.
The site was approved for preliminary and final site development plan last February. It's located at the corner, the northeast corner of 10th Ave. and 31st Street. The big changes, and I'll just highlight them, the council's received a pretty detailed packet of information, is that the applicant is proposing the same number of units, but really going from two buildings along 31st Street to one building. The new buildings and the elevations and materials have been supplied in the packet. I think one key element to this is the parking. Previously, all the units on 31st Street had parking that was going to be outside. The building has raised a little bit in elevation to provide for underground parking, which I think really is going to provide a much better build out of the site. It's going to allow for more green space and does accommodate the parking that's required by code. Another change was the addition of a management office, which we found that that's, it's good to have the management office on site and within the parameters of the project, especially when you have the number of units that are being proposed. As in this situation, we have 147 units. A couple of questions that came up in the past have been buffering. The buildings are taller than the neighborhood to the west, and so the setback is normally 25 feet. I think on Tuesday, it indicated that the setback on this site plan was going to be greater than it was previously. I misspoke. It's the same setback. There is a detailed buffer between the sidewalk and the building, and it is at 30 feet, which is five foot greater than the setback for the under, or five foot greater than the zoning would provide for if this was just straight multifamily zoning. Additionally, on the north side, and on the illustration, it would be to the right side of the page, you can see there's an increased in density of the landscaping in that area. With the underground parking, there's access to the units to that north side, and they've increased the density of the buffer zone there to ensure that when cars exit that building at night, that they don't shine into the residence property on the north. I'd also point out that consideration has been given to access to the property, and I know there was detailed conversations regarding the drive onto 31st to ensure that that as well would not create light intrusion into adjacent properties. A traffic study was associated with this project. Some of the concerns that Planning Commission were traffic concerns. The traffic study did not suggest that there is going to be any issue with the development in the area. Not to say that there's not going to be increased traffic, just that the increased traffic would not be of the nature that required any additional improvements. The Planning Commission did review this at their meeting last month and recommend approval of the project moving forward to the city council. There were, I believe I indicated, 179 postcards were distributed to inform the public of this public meeting. To, we have not received any comments as of today from the public, but I was not at the Planning Commission, but it's my understanding there were about 12 residents at that meeting, and a few of them did speak to some of the issues that I brought up this evening. So with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them throughout the public hearing or after. And then just to point out that there's two items on the agenda tonight related to this public hearing. One is the preliminary site development plan, and then there's the final site development plan. I would, just one other comment is that originally there was going, I believe the project went to start on 31st Street, one of the buildings on 31st. That has been turned and the developers intending to start with the project or the building that fronts 10th Avenue. So I think I've highlighted the major changes associated with the revised site plans, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you. Public hearing is now open. If there's anyone here to speak in favor, please come forward, state your name and your address.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chad Pelley, 300 Country Club Drive in Mount Vernon. Tom pretty much summed it up. We think we've made some changes that make this a better project, safer project, as mentioned, some aesthetic things. And certainly, there was about 12 people at the PNC, and we've been in contact with them, certain things like some dead trees that are in that existing basin and light concerns and some of those other things will mitigate as well as we can and guarantee them that onsite management will help with regulating the dog park and some of the other things that might have been a concern. I'll give you a little update and then I'll be here for any questions. We've got, you know, the building's been demolition as far as the old YMCA, probably mid-April pending approval tonight. We will be under construction with foundation of that first building, moving right along to about a 14 to 16-month build. We'll stagger, you know, that's up for discussion right now, how long will stagger to the second building, but certainly want to allow the absorption. Although we're really excited about this infill reuse site, we want to be a little bit cautious bringing that number of units on at once. But if there's any questions of me, I'll be glad to answer.
Sharper.
Chad, first off, I just, I know you've done a lot of work in terms of the look and features of this development, and we've seen this multiple times. I was looking at the site plan and is the addition of the berms on the north aspect of the property, is that a new consideration or was that from the inception?
I think that there was some conversation with staff when we first suggested the layout, and that was an addition beyond what was included in the first one, due to that drive access on that north end of that building. We didn't have that drive before and just felt, you know, those cars coming out at that angle, coming up and out of the ground, it just made sense.
Sure.
And the neighbors, I think, were concerned preliminary, when we came in front of this group with more trees, they want more trees. And even since that meeting, we'll add more to the even, I'll call it the east side, some of those condos over there, there's a lot of trees that died in that detention basin. So it was a fair compromise.
Okay.
And there'll be a burn there. It's hard to tell on that two-dimensional drawing, but if you go back to it, just on the west side of their detention basin, there's about a three-foot berm there, so it's a nice opportunity to get them a little more privacy.
Okay. Good. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Is there anyone else here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak against? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution number 30348, approving the Green Park Apartment Living Preliminary Site Development Plans for Property Located at 3100 10th Avenue, Marion, Iowa. This is Green Park Apartment Living LLC.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number 30348, approving the Green Park Apartment Living Preliminary Site Development Plan for Property Located at 3100 10th Avenue, Marion, Iowa, Green Park Apartment Living LLC. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I've just got, just some comments. Again, I think from where this project was a few months back, all of the changes are improvements to the overall project. I think the building looks better, so I think it's got a better sideline. Putting this building on 31st Street into one building with parking underneath, I think is certainly going to be a benefit to the people in that building. Adding, and then that also reduces the amount of parking spaces and parking lots. And I remember when this first came to us, one of the issues that a lot of people in that neighborhood had was water runoff. So you've, I think, adjusted some of that, having more grassy area instead of parking lot will also be a benefit to minimizing any concerns about that as well. So appreciate some of the changes you've made. Again, I think they're all a plus for the project.
Right. So a residual question that I had, and I, Tom, I think we spent quite a bit of time discussing this earlier. There was concern about water pressure in the area. It has, refresh my memory how that's being addressed. There was some concern about the buildings in their full build-out would affect the water pressure in the area, and maybe that's a non-concern.
Yeah, and if I recall correctly, that there wasn't a concern by the water department of that pressure issue. But generally speaking, if there are, there can be additions made within the building to address that, it would be more of the developer's responsibility to ensure that that pressure exists to provide, so if they need pumps or such. But I could actually probably lean a little bit on Chad, but as you recall those conversations, I think we were all good at the end of the day. Okay, thank you. Okay, any more discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those aye, all those opposed, please say no. Motion carries with one abstention.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution number 30349, approving the Green Park Apartment Living Final Site Development Plan for Property Located at 3100 10th Avenue, Marion, Iowa, Green Park Apartment Living LLC.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 30349, approving the Green Park Apartment Living Final Site Development Plan for Property Located at 3100 10th Avenue, Marion, Iowa, Green Park Apartment Living LLC. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries with one abstention. Now we have a public hearing regarding the Boulevard Department's Preliminary Site Development Plan for Property Located at 610 and 648 Marion Boulevard in Marion, Iowa, by Talon LLC. Did you need to, are you back in on this one?
Yes.
It says pro tem there, so. Do you want to read that over then, and we'll start that over?
All right. We'll open the public hearing on the Boulevard Department's project, the site development plan, preliminary site development plan for 610 and 648 Marion Boulevard. Do you have a presentation before we proceed?
I can give a quick overview.
Go ahead.
Your Honor. Talon LLC is seeking approval of preliminary site development plan and development of a 93-unit apartment building and six-unit townhome development located at 610 648 Marion Boulevard. The project is located on four acres and will have a density of about 24 units per acre. For reference, the project area is a former Haynes property site and would be north and east of the intersection of Twixtown Road and Marion Boulevard. The project area and overall will include, as indicated, a larger apartment building situated off of Marion Boulevard with six townhomes located, kind of tucked back behind into the east of the larger building. This project is a workforce housing tax credit project that the city supported through an application process. I would point out that there, as a project of that nature, there's going to be a fitness center, playground, there's a dog area included in the development, and I believe in the packet, it outlines all the locations of those amenities associated with the project. Postcard notifications were sent out to property owners within 300 feet. The Planning Commission did review this project at their last meeting, and Mr. and Mrs. Kendall attended that meeting in opposition of the project or voiced concerns about the project. They live in the property just east of the development. I think we've been talking about it as a house on the hill internally. And so I think they're here this evening to make some comments. I just point out that the city council approved the zoning of this property on February 3rd, and this is the next step in developing the project, is to go through the preliminary and final site development planning process, as just as we did with the Green Park project previously. We'll get a preliminary site development plan, final site development plan. In this instance, the property's never been final platted, so also on the agenda this evening is a final plat for that project or for this project. I know the council has been able to review the details of the site plan, and staff has provided a detailing of this project as it relates to the comprehensive plan. I'm not going to go through all of those details that were provided to the council, and I would just ask if there's questions, I could take those at this point.
Okay. Or we can, or you could also answer questions at any time during.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Resolutions. Anybody have questions at this time for Tom? Okay. So, all right, the public hearing is open, so at this time we'll ask for comments from the public in favor of this project. So, and then we'll go with anyone in opposition. So anyone in favor, please come forward, state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Thank you.
My name is Josh Krueger with Talon LLC 1305 East Benson Roads, Fall, South Dakota. So tonight, in front of us is the preliminary final preliminary site development plan, final site development plan, and the final plat. After the last planning and zoning meeting, where we had a few comments to address, one including relocation of the playground to be distanced from the dog park, we, it's kind of funny how that happens, because we actually had the playground where we show it now initially and moved it back, so it's now back in its first location, which is, you know, it's kind of off to the north side of the apartment building, which works out really well, and it actually gives more room in the center area for the dog park. Obviously, there was a traffic study involved with this project. It didn't note any improvements to any city infrastructure being required for the increased traffic, but they did have the recommendation to add a splitter lane to the entrance and exit off of Marion Boulevard. We do have that shown now, so this is, it's just a better way to control traffic at that entrance, being a right-in, right-out with the median along Marion Boulevard. We do have the other entrance off of Twixtown Road as well. And then we also, I believe, between the planning and zoning meeting and this meeting, we increased some of the landscaping units and some of the buffer yards as well to kind of shield ourselves from some of the adjacent zoning uses where the project is located. And we have pretty much finalized where we're at today, and I'm open for any questions.
Okay. Questions? Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, one of my comments, I think, on Tuesday, I did address a few of the questions about the traffic around there, the corner, and some of the suggestions that came out of the traffic study, but that doesn't affect your building at all. My comment is probably about your exterior materials, which is a little more unusual than we've seen around here with the hardy siding. So we can have maybe some comments from you.
Yeah.
And then some more comments, maybe from staff about, I saw you red your letter about why you want that, but my first appearance, when I look at the pictures, at least the portrayal of it, it looks just like residential vinyl siding.
It's really tough to get a feel for it until you're standing right there in front of it. I completely agree. You know, the Hardy, James Hardy Siding is a large siding manufacturer that they really took over the multifamily market over the last three or four years. So the siding materials on this product include four different types of hardy siding. It's a fiber cement board, so it is extremely resistant to any rot. It's very durable. You know, you can't sit there and hit it with a hammer and dent it like you can LP composite siding. It comes pre-finished so that the paint on the exterior is extremely durable as well. It has a 25-year warranty, I believe, that comes with the installation, and we have to get it inspected as well. But, you know, the lap siding areas on here on renderings and in distant pictures, it's hard to pick up some of the different features that it brings to the project, but this lap siding is actually smooth siding where you see vinyl siding and normal lap siding is a kind of a cedar mill texture. So it really looks pretty sleek in person, more urban, more modern, you know, a little bit more in the opposite direction of traditional look. And then we obviously do have aluminum, powder-coated aluminum decks that are custom fab for our buildings that kind of add to that more urban look, that fit in with the setting, you know, along a major street like Marion Boulevard, and not so much in the traditional sense of being, you know, located in and around more residential areas. We do have hardy panel siding and trims where they're. We do have hardy panel siding and trims where they're extruded aluminum trims with like four by eight sheet panel siding that create some kind of neat reveal features with siding and you know, we, we've had a lot of good success with the durability on, with this project, with this product on different projects that we've done. And we feel it, it really, you know, if you, if you look at downtown Des Moines, Minneapolis, you'll see Hardy products used on almost every multifamily building. If they're just a really popular option and they hold up very well to different climate zones and weather. And they, they, they look sleek, so.
Yeah, I've used it, I think, where I worked before, we'd used it to some extent, more limited, not to the massive extent, I think that you're proposing. And your letter certainly indicated you've got a lot of good success with it and I understand the durability of it. Where else has this been used in this area, can I ask?
I believe Terrace Glen, they're, they're building off Alberna.
Right.
And it has that and right offhand, I can't think of another project, but I, I know it's a popular project or a popular product in, in development though.
Have you ever done other projects using other materials, brick or other materials besides, or is this kind of your go-to material now?
Definitely been our go-to, especially with some of the, the issues with getting siding materials, which has been pretty tough lately. Because Hardy has really kept up with some of the orders and they've honored their prices and not just passed on expense to contractors and other vendors. But we have used another popular item, which is Nietzsche Ha siding. They have architectural concrete panels, stone brick looking like panels. They, they have their place for sure. We aren't exceptionally impressed with their entire assembly and how it works and how it lives and breathes with the building. You know, even, even an area sixteen by sixteen on a building that's three hundred and sixty feet long, you'll get some movement in the building and all of those panels, you know, they're not interlocked with each other, other than the top and bottom. So, you'll see the panels split apart and kind of gaps throughout, you know, even the first year. And to fix that requires removal of entire rows of siding and you only fix the problem for about a year. So, it's, it's kind of a tough product to use on a large building, we've found. And just to get rid of some of those maintenance items, you know, we've kind of looked past it unless we find a really good feature area to use it. Our entrance of the building actually has four different types of Nietzsche materials on it because we like the look of it. And, you know, it, it, it works really well in moderation.
Good, thanks. Sarah, go ahead.
Steve may have covered some of these, so I just, again, look, I look at it and, and this is our gateway. I mean, this is really the entrance point on this side of town to Marion. This is the first thing people driving into Marion, one of the first things they're going to see that's going to reflect the community. And so I guess I want to make sure we're doing the best in reflecting what we are and what our community is, we do this. And so, when they're asking the questions on durability and I, you know, I appreciate that. On the second, on the other side of it, I'm like, so trees, landscaping, all of that green space, this isn't, we're not going to put sticks up. I mean, these are good trees when we put these up, right? This isn't a
Two inch caliber trees at a minimum, some of them will be longer than that. Quite a few variations of shrubs, plants, natural grasses, landscape rock. You name it, there's, there's quite a bit of landscaping on this project. Some, I mean, I would say three quarters of it is, is definitely required for different city ordinances and, and other reasons. But we do have, you know, a full set of landscaping all the way around the building. You know, the playground isn't just going to be a playset set on grass. We'll have, you know, engineered mulch with landscape blocks around it. And it's, you know, our goal is to make the entire property just look nice and elegant and make sure that it's well maintained from day one until, you know, the end of it, so.
And, and this is probably a little off, but is it, when you come in, is it, is it a secure building? Or is it like an open to a lobby building or do you come into hallways? How does that?
The, the, when you walk through the front door, it's open to the front lobby area where the elevator is, where the storage room, we got a parcel room for packages. We've got the mailboxes for tenants on one side, we've got the leasing office. And then there's the community room and exercise room, kind of all off that main center area. When, during normal business hours, the front door, you know, if, if the leasing agent or property manager that's there is available, the front door will be unlocked. It's just push up a button and she can unlock lock it. If she's with the tenant or, you know, showing a room, it'll be locked otherwise. So, it kind of flips back and forth just based on their availability, but for the most part it's secure.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Grant.
So, back to the playground question, and I want to just make sure I'm, this diagram that's currently up on the, on the screens, that is not the location for the playground, it's moved around to essentially the north side?
Correct, yeah, the, the elevation up that you're seeing is, is not the latest one. It has moved on the north side of the apartment, which you wouldn't be able to see from this view either, it'd have to be from the other side, but you are correct.
Okay, all right, so that, that, that's helpful. And I suppose that change in location, you just shifted some parking spaces in that scheme?
Other, where the playground is, there's actually not parking spaces. So, this is right, right off of the side stair door. So, you can walk straight out of the building and go to the playground or you can walk along the front sidewalk or, or anything like that. So, it'll all be accessible as well, so.
Great, so based on our prior council discussion on this, I know, I think you've made some responsive changes relative to what was originally depicted with in-wall air conditioning units. So, I am a little curious in this, how is air conditioning being handled for all of the units?
Well, the in-wall AC units was, this was provided based on a, a similar project. It was never really a thought of using it here, that was a different town and different application. We use what are called VTAC units. There is a little mechanical closet inside of each apartment. And it's an all-in-one electric or gas furnace and air conditioning unit. So, it, it is, it's got a sleeve where it's louvered for intake of fresh air and exhaust directly through the exterior wall. So, it's just a flush louver that gets painted at the same color of the siding, so you barely even see it in the end.
Okay. All right, and so I, I think we've seen examples of that. So, I just want to maybe reinforce what council member Jensen and council member Mensor had, had commented on. This is our, you know, this is a gateway to, to the city. And we really, you know, have an interest in the total aesthetic treatment of the property to provide that visual and attractive and inviting kind of allure to the city. I know that, you know, you're, you're corresponding with everything that's necessary relative to the, to the zoning requirements and the like. But I just really want to emphasize that that's a real principal interest to us. And so, anything that as you move this forward that can augment what's currently planned would, I think, be a benefit to the overall community. We, we obviously have some other things to speak about, but I just wanted to emphasize the prior comments.
Anything we can do to improve throughout, you know, buyout of materials and stuff, obviously that would have to be passed through council. But if we have any ideas that we think would improve the aesthetic of the building that you guys would like to see, we'll definitely get it in front of you if necessary.
Cole, go ahead.
I, I, I would just echo what Grant said and I appreciate your willingness to do that. You get one chance to do it right.
Right.
And you're the person that's helping us do it right. So, the idea that you're, you know, you're, you're doing what we've asked, right? We've given sort of this is the, the requirements and that you're receptive to helping us do the best we can with this is really important. So, I appreciate that and wanted to elevate Grant's comments as you think about that.
If you have something else.
Yeah, one additional comment about that, we did, Grant did pull up a picture of Terrace Glen that Tom referred to that has the Hardy siding on it. And the reason that doesn't stand out to me as much, it's not a four-story building. But it also, so it's not as tall as that, but it also has brick on the first level. And then it also has more dimension to it, awnings, different, more dimensions. Your building, I know it's a little more difficult and, and I know you're trying to get some dimension look out of this by using the different colors of the Hardy siding. But it just is a big box and the question is, how do you make that look better? So, I'm trying to say, well, brick on one level, make it look better or more materials like that. I mean, I'm not, I'm not an expert in this area, but you know, but that's, I didn't, so I make that comment on why Terrace Glen was mentioned, but it doesn't have nearly as much percentage-wise as your building is proposed. So, that's why that project doesn't stand out to me.
So, if I can kind of add on top of that, so, you know, the brick is obviously coming up quite a few times and, and I think I just want to get my point across that this building is not meant to look traditional. It, it isn't in a traditional location, it's not in residential location, it's, it's in a high-traffic urban commercial setting. And that's, that's what our basis was and what our goal was. We feel like what we've proposed with the materials that we have selected achieves that, especially with one of the major features that is really, you can't see very well from the renderings and it's hard to describe until you're in front of it. But the decks, you know, there's, I think there's thirty-one decks on the front of the building. They're all, you know, powder coated aluminum, one-piece extruded floors that are impervious as well. So, the tenant above you or below you isn't getting rained down on. They add a lot to, to the design features for the building and really make it that more downtown setting. I, I wish I could, I could portray it better, it's just really hard to without having it done.
Yeah, I wish we had some photos of a real project that
I've submitted those, I don't think they've ever been included, but I do have exact examples of this building in real life.
Okay.
And I can, I'll obviously forward those on to you.
Okay, yeah, and I hope you don't mind all the questions. I mean, we, we, we're really appreciative that you want to do a project here. We, as a city, have been trying to, our motto is reach higher. We're trying to give the community projects they can be proud of. And, you know, there is public incentive in this project. And so, I think that gives us a little more reason to ask for the best. And it is a, a, a entryway to the city, the main entryway to the city from, from Cedar Rapids. So, I hope you don't mind that we're asking these questions. We're, it's not that, you know, we, we, we're, we're very appreciative that you want to do a project here, we welcome you here. We just want to, at the end of the day, ten years from now, twenty years from now, say that was a great project, you know. And we want to, we want to celebrate it with you and, and be proud of it, just like you are. Are there any other questions? So, just so I'm clear, did you say that you are willing to consider modifications of the materials or?
Through, you know, the, tonight is the first step in, in moving, you know, in the direction of starting construction. Obviously, we have proposed and bid out these materials and have some design alternatives, just knowing that there were going to be questions and coordination, working with city staff. So that if that, if we do have something that comes back, that may be something we want to get in front of the council, planning and zoning. We kind of have that option put together already. So, I know that would have to come back and be approved, but it wouldn't slow down the project from moving forward if it was just an exterior material change.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone else here to speak in, in favor of the project, please come forward. Okay, anyone in opposition, please come forward, state your name and address and speak into the microphone, thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Dela Kendall and we live in the house that you can't see up there because he did a artist rendition or whatever. That picture is not on the website, our yard has never looked like that. I did provide some pictures of what our yard looks like and our house looks like since the deratio. And we lost so many trees and everything's such a mess. And we're, we're very concerned about the fact that I don't think he's going to be planting all those mature trees in my yard. They're not going to be there. So, all that beautiful greenery he has up there is a dream. It's not going to happen in our lifetime unless, you know, but we can't be planting trees that big there. And he's going to put a dog park right next to our property. And we're not thrilled about that, we have a little dog, he does really well staying in the yard. We can open the door, he goes out, runs around, comes right back. But he isn't going to do that if he sees a bunch of the dogs. And he's not putting any fencing up between the properties. And the pictures aren't very big, I thought they would be a little bit bigger. But, um, you know, we've got the two pictures of the house, one from the lot where the apartments will be built. And then the one on the right-hand corner is from across the street, I think it was Chibos parking lot or something. That's how the yard looks. It looked horrible all year, last year we planted eleven trees and bushes, some of them made it, some didn't. So, we've got to work on that again. And there is a boundary issue because if you see the one on the left corner where my SUV is parked, that was the fence that Haynes had up. We thought that was the property line and nobody ever told us differently. And when they started knocking down the house next door, we put up the green snow fence because I think they were, the worker was trying to drag the trailer down our driveway. And now Josh has sent us a thing and part of our driveway is apparently on his property. And he's made a big project out of that that basically takes a bite out of the middle of our driveway. Down at the curb, it's fine, there's apparently a curb out. And then where I park my car is going to be a problem and it is going to be a problem. I'm, I'm disabled and I went out this morning and took the picture in the middle on the bottom. So, on the very right is the door we come out of and then I have the car right there. And I'm probably not going to be able to do that anymore. So, um, he's put some stipulations that are totally out of our comfort zone. I mean, the apartments look great, but that other tree part, that's, that's not the way it looks at all. So, he's making it look like it's going to be really great. And it's not. And we're worried about the dog park being near our house and being near my grand, our grandkids and our dog. And he's not going to be putting anything up but some trees and bushes. And that just doesn't seem like that's going to be adequate. I wish he was moving the dog park somewhere else instead of right near our property, that would be helpful. I think we're also losing where we pick up our mail. There's just, there's some fine tuning that needs to be done on this.
Let me talk for a minute.
Good.
My name's Ross Kendall and my situation is that where, where my wife had just said that our driveway has been there since two thousand and five, at least, since we've lived there. And it was there before, I mean, I grew up, that's my grandfather's house and that driveway has been in, in use since
Nineteen fifty-five.
Yeah, at least not nineteen fifty-five. And then, like I say, somebody comes into our property or comes into our state, into our town and says, I'm going to build this big old apartment complex next year, build your house. And after the surveyor got done, we found out part of our driveway was on his land. He has proposed to go ahead and do an egress for us. What?
For the driveway.
What's it called though? An easement, an easement for the driveway. But if we sign his easement, the problem is we, he wants us to take out a million-dollar insurance policy on that piece of ground that he basically has control of. We can't have any big trucks up there or anything. On that piece of ground that he basically has control of, we can't have any big, big trucks up there or anything. If anything happens, we have to pay for repairs. Now, if I was in your situation as council, I would say, well, if somebody was moving in, next to me in an apartment complex. Maybe uh fill out a million dollar insurance policy, would you do that? I'm not, I'm not willing to do that, because it's going to be a forever thing for me. I mean, it's why should I pay out of pocket because this guy's going to, you know, put an apartment complex next to my house? I mean, you guys wouldn't do it.
He also made a comment in the package that. If he has to access an easement for his property on that section of driveway and our driveway got torn up. We would have to pay to repair his, his land, and I think that is totally ridiculous. Um. There's got to be a different way to work this out. But you know, I wish it did look all nice and green, well, no, I wouldn't want that many trees, we'd never see the sun. But um, our yard has never looked like that, and we went through all the pictures on the Lynn County website for that, for our house. It has never looked like that, and somebody last meeting tried to say, oh, that's a picture that was online. Well, it may have been, but it wasn't our property, I don't know whose property it was, but it sure as heck wasn't ours. Because it, ours isn't like that at all, never has been, we've been there over sixteen years, never looked like that. So, um, I'm hoping some of those things can be addressed. Do we have any?
Do you have any, anything else to add before we have questions? Are there any questions from council? Go ahead, Sarah.
Just a clarification, because I'm, I'm looking at a little map, and I actually drove by, um, to kind of look. When you're talking about your driveway, um, can you clarify, are you? You're talking about the one that comes onto Marion Boulevard, because there's, there's, is there access that you can?
We have an easement in the back.
But you, when you talk about your driveway, you're talking about the front one that we see, not the one that goes behind.
Right, do you want to see this?
I think, I think I'm looking at the map of it, how it kind of comes in through the, I thought it's called the Nepoleys parking lot, but.
And then apparently part of our driveway goes over their line.
Yeah, because I've, I've got a little map here, so um. When you're, when, in, in the discussion points that you're talking to with us, um. When you're referencing these, are you, are you discussing the one that, the back one or the, I'll call like the back one and the front one?
The front one, he has nothing to do with the back one, because we have an easement on record, which I had the paperwork for that I thought Nicole was going to give all of you.
Yeah.
Yesterday, that's been in place, um, Ross's um mother did that. And also, his father purchased a small section behind our house. And Ross has a, a trailer back there that we use for storage, it's a horse trailer, and we put our John Deere in it. And um, excuse me, oh, good, no, my voice is going to go. And I'm not sure if he's aware, we purchased that, uh Ross's dad purchased that, and we, we have all the paperwork on that. Which I'm hoping you guys got as well, because Nicole said she had no idea, so um, of any of these.
Well, the problem I have with it is because, because we are on his property, we, we've discussed it, maybe we should move it. If we move our driveway, the front driveway over ten feet, means we're going to have to probably pave it. And this is an expense I, I, I just can't deal with right now, I mean, especially after the deratio, we're rebuilding our house.
The driveway issue, to me, seems like it's a private, private matter between two landowners. Doesn't have anything to do with the city or this proposal of this project, it's a private matter between the two landowners. So do you, if you have anything regarding the project, I'm not trying to cut you short, but we do have to keep the meeting, meeting going, and so if you have any issues. That, that have to do with the project or why not, why the city should or should not approve this site plan. Um, we'll take those comments if you don't mind, but.
Okay, can they relocate the dog park from right next to our house? I mean, we have no. Nothing there.
Your honor.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'd like to speak up on that issue, um, I, you are correct that the easement issue would be a private issue that would have to be disputed. As far as where the location of certain amenities are on the property, unless there's a violation of our standards or codes, that's not something that we can dictate. That would again be a private issue that they would have to take up, potentially a private nuisance issue.
Okay. So, any other questions? For them, yes, go ahead, or, or to Karen?
Well, it was, um, you had mentioned that there was not going to be fencing around the dog park.
I, I don't know what he's doing around the dog park, but I, I think, I wish there was going to be fencing between our two properties since the dog park's going to be there.
Okay, the dog park, I would think is their code for a dog park to have to have fencing around it, I would think, so, yeah, okay.
Any other questions? Oh, okay, any, any, any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. You had a question for?
Mr. Cooper? Okay, yes, so the question I've got, which I think does come under the purbanance of the city council. Uh, just, can you describe what the buffering is going to be between your property and their property? So I'm looking at the picture in the top left, I see where you've got the green space, you've got a row of trees. What else is being done on the boundary lines for buffering between your property and their property?
So on the buffer between, I mean, we'll just start from the dog park working back.
Okay.
Um, the dog park is fully fenced and enclosed with the gate. Um, as well as it's actually, it's hard to tell from that rendering. But the dog park is actually encompassed by a retaining wall that's anywhere from four and a half to five and a half feet tall. Um, so it's, you know, the dog park's down here, the top of the retaining wall is here, and then the slope up to the property is actually a three to one slope as well. It would be, you know, a grass maintained slope, but it's not going to be something that people are going to be walking and using for, you know, a leisure area. And then up adjacent to the property line, there is a buffer yard built up with trees. Shrubs, landscape, rock, um, I think, I believe the distance of the buffer yard is ten feet wide. Um, and we believe that'll achieve the density to kind of screen us, even though there isn't currently a proposed fence. Because the property line to the actual dog park or the adjacent parking that's nearest that property line. Is still in ex, it's between fifty-five to sixty feet away from, from that area. So there is some good distance, it's just hard to tell with, with what we're looking at there, uh, then in reference to the trees. I didn't mean any malfeasance on the trees, it was just trying to add something there to, for privacy, I didn't want to put anybody else's property on. Any of the other renderings that we were putting out, so.
And what you've already given, you talked about, so you got the four to five foot block wall, then with a line of trees and shrubs.
Yep.
Another vegetation.
Correct.
Below that or above it?
Above it, so up, on.
Additional screen above that wall.
Correct.
Alright, okay, thanks.
Okay, Tom, go ahead and then Grant.
Okay, just, I, I just uh want to let the council know, and I know there's been a lot of conversation about the. The, the, the visual of the trees, I know Nicole has worked hard to convey that. It's, it's, it's in Google Earth, um, and so if you go at an angle from Google Earth, I, I mean, I'm looking at it, so I don't, I don't think there is any. Doctoring of it, I'm looking at it on my screen, it's very similar to that, so if you go at an angle on Google Earth and take a snapshot. And, and put it into the software they use to represent the surrounding areas, which we like to see when we analyze a project. To illustrate how it sits into the natural, and I think ten years ago, you wouldn't be able to do that, so we, we appreciate and ask for those types of renderings. Um, and I just also want to point out that the, I, I believe that easement documents that are, that are discussed were in the packet. Um, and for your review and the recorded easements, which the recorded easements are relative to the property on the northeast side. Uh, they, they do not represent the area where the, the current encroachment on to Talon's property is. So there's two different, uh, there's multiple areas where it kind of punches in and out of the properties. I just, I just want to point out that I think you have all the documents that have been provided, uh, Nicole provided those in the packet and, and the, and the, for the council, so.
Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, thank you, I, so I'm um picking up a little bit more where council member Jensen left off on the. Boundary between the two properties, um, and I guess the question that I'm really. So it is a five-foot block wall within vegetation planted on top of it. Does that provide a line of sight, uh, some, some measure of line of sight screening between the properties? Is that the objective?
Uh, the, I mean, yeah, the elevation from, I'd say where the dog park is to the actual property line. I think is, is right around eleven or twelve feet that you're kind of looking up, uh, could be in excess of that, but I know it's at least that. Uh, but with the current buffer yard shown, um, you know, will we have completely opaque screening between properties? No, I don't think that's the intent of buffer yards, it's just to step things back a little. But, you know, there is quite a few things as far as barriers and buffers between the property line. And the dog park as it sets there, um, you know, if it was just plain green space, I think it would be a, a. A lost use for, for some prime area in the middle of the property. Um, you know, we've got it as far away from the property line as we possibly can, and we think it fits well with where it's at. So, I mean, it's, the, the retaining wall, it, it's not scalable, you know, you'd have to go all the way around. Um, the retaining wall to be able to get up with, up the hill in, in any extent, so.
So, uh, let me rephrase my question, because I really wasn't thinking about the, the dog, uh, the fenced-in dog area. Okay?
Okay.
I'm merely asking about the boundary and uh area between the two properties. And wanting to understand what sort of visual screening. Either by plantings or wall, wall plus planting uh is being contemplated. I just wanted to have clarity on what your plan was there, was it about the dog park?
Okay, so the level of buffer yard that is bordering both properties has vegetation that is at all three levels. From low, medium to high, so we have low shrubs and grasses, we have medium-sized bushes, and then we have the minimum of two-inch or larger caliber trees. Which are actually, you know, they're fourteen, fifteen foot tall trees to begin with, um, so we have kind of that built-up layer. That, you know, is, is meant to screen partially the visual, um, but it isn't meant to be completely opaque.
Right, okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else to address the council? Either in favor or in opposition, please come forward. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Were there any other comments outside the meeting, Tom? Other neighbors, other comments, okay, please note that for the public record.
Okay, your honor, I move to approve resolution number three zero three five zero. Approving Boulevard Apartments Preliminary Site Development Plan located at six ten and six forty-eight Marion Boulevard. Marion, Iowa, this is being requested by Talon LLC.
Second. It's been moved in second to approve resolution number three zero three five zero, approving Boulevard Apartments Preliminary Site Development Plan. At six ten, six forty-eight Marion Boulevard, discussion? Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, can we make this resolution subject to final approval by city council? Uh, Mr. Kruger referred to some other exterior. Planning options for exterior materials, so he indicated there are some different exterior options. That he can propose to us.
Your honor.
Yes, ma'am.
You could table the resolutions until you had that information. But if you amended the resolution and had a subject to approval, it would essentially be bringing it back later for the same.
Same result, do the same thing, okay. Yes, go ahead.
So in that same vein, we, this is, uh, we're, we're on the cusp of uh doing the approval. Of the preliminary site plan. Could we hold off on the final site development plan for that clarification? In other words, do the, do the preliminary hold off on the final?
That, that's what I would suggest, uh, we get the preliminary in place, you can move forward with the final plat. Because the preliminary site development plan is just going to.
So I guess the other, the other thing that might be interesting to understand with the final. And it's been real clear that, you know, there's these private concerns between two landowners that. There needs to be some, I think, further discussion. Uh, and resolution hopefully uh by two neighbors. Um, it would be just kind of interesting to understand how that would all shake out as an input to our final approval. Just as a point of information, since this has been of concern, not that it has direct bearing at all. On any considerations that we can make. I guess that's what I'm just suggesting is, is that um further discussions take place to alleviate the, the concerns both ways.
Other discussion?
If I, Tom, I did say that with the preliminary site development allows for the final plat, that's, that's, that's incorrect. Regardless, the prop, the property can be final platted tonight, but having a, have a preliminary and a final site development plan is, is, is why. This, this particular reason is, is one of the reasons why there's a preliminary and a final, the preliminary provides general guidance to know that the developer's on the right track. Um, if there's modifications needed or necessary, they can come back and, and address those in a final site development plan. So, I mean, it kind of works. A lot of times the council does approve a preliminary and a final at the same time, but this is why we have separate actions and separate plans. Sometimes you don't even see a fully developed final site development plan at the preliminary, because they want to know that they're on the right track per se. So.
Other discussion? Okay. So we'll vote on the preliminary site development plan, um. Okay, all those in favor of approving resolution number three zero three five zero, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion's approved.
So, if we want them to come back with some exterior material options, then. Is this where we should consider tabling the final plat? Okay, so should I? Final site development plan, I'm sorry, yes, so you want me to read this as is or read it with tabling?
I think you have to make the motion.
As it is, right?
Okay, yep.
Uh, mayor, I move to approve resolution number three zero three five one, approving Boulevard Apartments Final Site Development Plan. Located at six ten and six forty-eight Marion Boulevard, Marion, Iowa, brought by Talon LLC.
Then moved by council member Jensen, seconded by council member Atkins to approve resolution number three zero three five one. Approving Boulevard Apartments Final Site Development Plan. Discussion.
I would move that we table the final site development plan, pending the developer coming back with some exterior. Renderings for different materials.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded that we table resolution number three zero three five one, discussion on tabling. All those in favor of tabling? Resolution number three zero three five one, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
We have one no, the motion is approved. So the motion's, that resolution is tabled.
But we can approve the final plat, is that right, Tom? Okay. So, uh, your honor, I make a motion to approve resolution number three zero three five two. Approving Lot One Boulevard Apartment Edition Final Plat and Memorandum of Agreement for Property Located at six ten and six forty-eight. Marion Boulevard, Marion, Iowa, Talon LLC.
Second. Been moved in second to approve resolution number three zero three five two, approving Lot One Boulevard Apartment Edition. Final plat and the memorandum of agreement for six ten and six forty-eight Marion Boulevard, discussion. Okay, I would just add that, uh, you know, for, 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 I was encouraged to hear Mrs. Kendall say that. This is a nice-looking project, I think, we, we think this is a, a good use of that prod, property, it did, I mean, it's a commercial property, it's going to develop or redevelop. Into something, you know, that, as, as far as what all the options, uh, that, that. uh, that, that it could be, this, this is a good use, I think. And I, there are issues that need to be worked out between the property owners, I think. Uh, you know, the driveway is one, the, the, the potential fencing, buffering. I think those things can all be, can all be worked out, but in the end, I think this is a, a good redevelopment and reuse of this, of this property at the, at the entrance of the city on a major thoroughfare. So, I just wanted to add that. Any further discussion? All those in favor of Resolution number three zero three five two, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Ordinance Number twenty-two dash zero four, approving a request to rezone property from R three to family residential to T R three, traditional two-family residential for, for property located at twenty ninety-five Third Avenue, Marion, Iowa. And this is on behalf of the Marion Community Build LLC. Final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve as ordinance, uh, the final consideration of Ordinance Number twenty-two dash zero four, approving the request to rezone the property from R three to T R three for the, for the residential property at twenty ninety-five Third Avenue. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve Ordinance Number twenty-two dash zero four, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no.
I abstain.
Okay, we have one abstention, and the motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number three zero three five three, approving a requested first sidewalk located at twenty ninety-five Third Avenue, Marion, Iowa. This is brought by Marion Community Build LLC.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve Resolution Number three zero three five three, approving the request to this first sidewalk at twenty ninety-five Third Avenue. Discussion? All those in favor of Resolution Number three zero three five three, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
I abstain.
Motion is approved with one abstention.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number three zero three five four, approving Marion Community Build First Edition Final Plat and Memorandum of Agreement for Property Located South of Third Avenue and West of Twenty-first Street, Marion, Iowa. Marion Community Build LLC.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve Resolution Number three zero three five four, approving Marion Community Build First Edition Final Plat and Memorandum of Agreement. Discussion? The motion, uh, the motion is to approve Resolution Number three zero three five four. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
Abstain.
The motion is approved with one abstention. This time, we have a public comment section for any comments from the public on any item or any matter. If there's anyone here to address the council, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to council comments before we adjourn the closed session. Council comments. Mr. Harper?
None this week. Thank you.
Nothing.
Nope.
Sarah? None, okay, well, I'll remind everyone of the State of the City program next Thursday, March tenth, at eleven thirty at the Cedar Rapids Marriott. I also wanna say thank you to all the Team Marion members who showed up last Friday night for the improv at the, at the, um, at the theater. I, I really appreciate it, I felt the love, seeing, seeing that.
That's the, was he funny?
You could ask. We raised some money for the holiday lights, and it was a, it was a fun evening, and I, I really do appreciate, felt very valued having so many team members there to support, so thank you. This morning, we had a, um, networking event at Bank Iowa out on Terrace, Tower Terrace Road. And also, there was a ribbon cutting for Just Make Music, I think it's called, it's a music education business that Steve represented the city and hopefully said some good words on behalf of the city. Um, and, uh, that's it for me for this week. Thank you. Oh, no, I do have one more thing. I'm sorry, I don't mean to prolong the meeting, but I have one thing that I, I wanted to mention. Specifically because it really does exemplify reaching higher, and it's about some team members who really went above and beyond for a resident. And to me, when, you know, all of us, and especially me, I'm out in the community saying that we are, you know, here to serve residents and to, and to, and to provide good customer service and to help people solve issues, and it came to my attention this week that there, uh, our, our, our team members in the building department really helped a, a homeowner who needed some repairs done, helped them by, by, by arranging for the repairs, the work, the contractor, the, the materials to be done free of charge to the, to the homeowner. The city didn't pay anything, but the, the, they helped them get those, get those services donated by businesses. Uh, and that just speaks highly, I think, of our entire team and what kind of people we have on our team, so. Gary and Matt, thank you, and thank you for reaching higher and representing the city so well, so. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn the closed session regarding litigation as permitted under Section twenty-one point five one C of the Code of Iowa, two separate measures.
It's been moved in seconded to adjourn the closed session regarding litigation as permitted under Section twenty-one point five one C of the Code of Iowa. We'll have the council statement.
Thank you, Your Honor, I've reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, Section twenty-one point five one C.
Okay, any discussion before we vote? All right, we'll take the roll call, please.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mayor Appelosli?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Menzer?
Yes.
Thank you for joining us. Meeting, the regular meeting is, is on hold while we are in closed session. We'll come back and adjourn the meeting when completed. Thank you.